Yeah.
I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, August 7th, 2018 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor LaHusis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Kikta is absent in excuse. Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Chaplain Greg Agira from the Florida Hospital in North Pinellas. If you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer this evening. We are thankful to be part of this beautiful city of Tarpon Springs. I ask for your blessing on this city where our families are raised, where friendships are made, where visitors come and create fond memories, and where we can enjoy our lives. Grant wisdom to our leaders and community members present here this evening as they care for the livelihood, the health, the prosperity, and the future of Tarpon Springs. In your lovely name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance is applied to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have a special presentation for Mr. George Stephan. This evening, we will recognize an outstanding citizen of Tarpon Springs for his services and his contributions to the city of Tarpon Springs. Mr. George Stephan, if you please come forward. Stephan, on behalf of the Board of Commissions and the people of Tarpon Springs, I'd like to present you this flag as a token of appreciation for your services and your contribution to Tarpon and to Pinellas County. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate it to the Commission for bestowing this appreciation on me. I started here in Tarpon Springs almost forty years ago and was given an opportunity by Chief Blaine LaCuras as a young man. And I always appreciated that and remember that. Obviously, as a citizen here in Tarpon Springs, I love the city. It's something that, as the gentleman in the chaplain said, it's a great city and people come here with a lot of memories. I have a lot of memories because I've lived here for almost fifty years. So I appreciate it. And it's humble to serve in Pinellas County and the citizens of Pinellas County, and certainly here specifically in Tarpon Springs. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any Commission comments?
I'll just say quick something.
Okay.
I knew the day was coming, but here we are and we're going to miss you. So I just wanted to let you know and thank you for your years of service.
Are there any public comments on this item?
You know, you can't get by without having me say something. You know, I think George said he's been here fifty years. I think I've known him that long. And, you know, I'm a few years older than George. And one of the things that prides me living here in Tarpon Springs is watching some of our young men who have grown up in this community, who have grown, you know, including Mr. Young here. He used to be a soccer coach when he was a kid. But to see them have grown and become not just men, but men that you're proud of, and men who have contributed to the community and contribute to society, and I want to thank you, George.
Stephan, again, thank you for your service. I'd like to announce that item number twelve will be deferred from the agenda, so it will not be discussed tonight. The first item on the agenda is a presentation, PSTA Coastal Route. I'm sorry?
Public comments.
Public comment?
Anything that will not be discussed tonight.
Okay. Come on. Come on forward. Yeah.
Peter Lackus, 514 Ashland Avenue. As it was stated by Mr. Stephan earlier, this is a community that many people come to rally around because they believe in not only our own self-government, but the quality of life that we want and expect from our local city. You will see that in a moment when the presentation comes of what we're doing for our schools. But what I want to speak about now is a community effort, an organization of citizens who came together to express their opinion. So I don't know if it's become public. I got a rumor earlier, and I confirmed it with Ms. Lemons, that Wawa is pulling their application for the site at alternate nineteen and Mirs. So I want to thank all of those who put in the efforts to stop this project from that site. And as I've said before, and I will say it again, it's just the wrong site. I spoke to Ms. Lemons, and what I think the board and our city administration should do is reach out to Wawa and say, "We're not against you. It just was the wrong place." The right place is Mirs and nineteen. Some of you may know it. There's a strip center face in nineteen. There's another strip center perpendicular to that. That's where there's a hookah shop, an insurance agency, the exotic pets, and some other retail units. But that plaza is totally underutilized. And if you drive down Mirs towards north or distant, you'll see after you get behind that plaza, there's a huge parking lot with a whole bunch of white vans back there. I'm not sure what the business is for, but the point I'm making is, is there's at least five acres there. That's the place they need to be. Once Mirs Mango is completed, the rest of the west part of nineteen will have access to that station. So again, I would like to say, we're not against Wawa. We were just against where they were going to put it. So I would like to thank all those who had any involvement in Wawa making the decision to, at least temporarily, maybe consider another site within Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone has any other public comments of the items that will not be discussed tonight, if you please come forward, state your name and your address for the record. You'll be given four minutes. We're here now. Thank you. And now we go into the presentation, PSTA Coastal Route by Cassandra Borchers, the Chief Developer Officer.
Good evening. While I pull my presentation up, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here in Tarpon Springs this evening. I am Cassandra Borchers. I'm the Chief Development Officer at the Pinellas Sun Coast Transit Authority. And we are currently serving the city of Tarpon Springs with a number of bus routes, including the coastal route, which is operated by our service partner, the Jolly Trolley. So you can get a sense of what services we have that are partnered with the Jolly Trolley. We have three routes, which include the coastal route, but they all come together to form part of our beach services along the north coast and Clearwater Beach. The north beach route and the south beach route have long been a partnership with the city of Clearwater. And the coastal route has been a partnership with the cities and municipalities along the north coast for almost ten years now. We've had some great success on the coastal route, and we've had a lot of changes in what we've, how we've been serving the north coast. Just last year, in 2017, we combined it with another route, the sixty-six. And this was our opportunity to have the coastal route operate seven days a week with the Jolly Trolley vehicles. We've also been working with the city of Clearwater on their spring break services. And this benefits the communities along the coastal route because we advertise what services we have along the north coast. And we've seen an incredible jump in the ridership along the coastal route because of this. So to give you a little bit of history about the coastal route, we began in 2010. And part of the service was supported by the Florida Department of Transportation in their Service Development Grant Program. It was only three days a week, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And the partners shared fifty-fifty in the cost after the grant. In October of 2016, the grant had run out, and the, but we had expanded the service to a seven-day-a-week service, as I mentioned before, in combination with our Route sixty-six. What this did was it changes the profile of our riders, not just bringing the services to tourists, but also giving residents and workers an opportunity to get up to Tarpon Springs. This summer, in the summer of 2017, we entered into a new contract with the Jolly Trolley. And that changed our cost estimates for the revenue service hours. This was fair to the Jolly Trolley as a service provider and as a private business. In February of 2018, we then expanded our service on the coastal route to give a one-seat ride from Clearwater Beach to Tarpon Springs. What we've found is that people are taking this in both directions. During our surveys in the spring break season, we found there were a number of people who were riding the entire length of the route, either coming to or from Tarpon Springs. This has been something new for us because when we originally had our connections at Island Estates, we didn't get that one-seat-ride feel up into Tarpon Springs. And so we have seen an increase in the ridership from 2017 to 2018 because of it. The current route does go up nineteen, does serve the Sponge Docks. And you can see all of the municipalities that it serves, all the way from Clearwater, Dunedin, Palm Harbor, Ozona, as well as Tarpon Springs. We've had a number of changes in the agreement over the years, and I'll get to what this year's proposal is in just a minute. But I want to show you how the amount of funding that PSTA has been contributing to this route has increased over the course of the last few years. As I mentioned, we did have a fifty-fifty agreement for some time. And in 2016, we did have some issues with the DDB. We agreed as PSTA to continue the service and got the city of Clearwater to also help with additional funding. In 2017, when we expanded to a seven-day-a-week service, PSTA took on that four-day-a-week service, increasing the amount of contribution by PSTA and lessening the amount for the other partners. The DDB did assume all of the funding from the city of Clearwater. And we also started to do some of our promotions, like free park and rides for the Blue Jays, as well as spring break services that were funded by the city of Clearwater. In 2018, we continued this formula, but we had a change with the new contract of the Jolly Trolley. So their cost per revenue hour went up about twenty percent from what we were paying before then to the new contract. And this was based on their audited rates that they had shown us. So we limited the increase to our city partners to seven percent because we knew that our city partners couldn't necessarily wear a twenty percent increase. We continued that spring break promotion, again, funded by the city of Clearwater, as well as added the Blue Jays. This was at no cost to the route partners, but it did bring a lot of attention to the route. And people were able to use this in both directions, to Dunedin, Tarpon Springs, and to Clearwater. Our proposed route agreement for this year, we propose that we keep the allocations the same, meaning PSTA would pick up eighty-eight percent of the total cost of the coastal route. But because of the change in our ridership and a decrease in the fare box revenue, we are asking for an increase in the total amount of contribution. So this would be a ten percent increase over 2018, which is in line with all of the other partners. It does account for a fare box decrease, which we think we will see come back to us in the future. And we propose to limit the escalation in the future to only five percent. This has been a longstanding agreement between all of the partners along the north coast. And we're excited to continue the service with your partnership and your support. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Yes. Mrs. Borchers, thank you for the presentation. The, these trolley services, I see that as a very beneficial to the businesses in downtown and to the Sponge Docks. It brings a lot of tourists down there. Do we know actually how many riders do we have coming to Tarpon Springs?
We know how many riders we have for the entire system. So in 2017, we are just over a hundred thousand people annually. And this year, we're on target to, to increase that. So we're already in, at the end of July, at a hundred thousand. We, also this year, we are going to install automatic passenger counters on our entire fleet. And so that will give us the data to know exactly who and how many people are boarding and alighting in Tarpon Springs. And we'll have that data next year.
Thank you. Any permission comment?
Thank you. And thank you for making the trip up here. Glad you took it with your mother on, on the way up. You're doing great things at PSTA. Thank you very much. A few questions. What is the reasoning for Clearwater's disproportionate contribution?
The Clearwater, the city of Clearwater contributes to the beach routes. And so they fund fifty percent of the south beach route and the north beach route. And their total contribution is somewhere in the range of two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. And so they are paying for services. They also helped with the Clearwater Beach Transfer Center, which is what has allowed us to give the coastal route a one-seat ride to the, to Tarpon Springs. And that contribution was at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the capital investment.
Okay. So thus there, that's why it's less. And so knowing from our PSTA board that ridership for PSTA as a whole is off and down each month, is the Jolly Trolley a different leader in the sense that it's going up compared to the, you know, the likely, like, the, like, the, like, the, like, traditional bus routes?
I think some of it is the vehicle. Some of it is what we like to call transportation. It's not just about getting people to where they're going, but also about the journey. And I think that's one of the special things, that by having a partner like the Jolly Trolley and the vehicles that they have, it gives us that opportunity to really serve multiple markets. And we're trying to do that in other parts of the county. So this is a leader for north county, showing the rest of the county how to have a route that can be increasing.
Well, I definitely think it's important for tourism, and it's a lot more inviting than a traditional bus is for tourists naturally, if they're not familiar with, you know, public transit. I look forward to what Commissioner Seber has to say. I know she's got, had a lot of thoughts on this with her, with her operations down at the Sponge Docks. And I had, I had asked Brad Lawrence to reach out. I'll be interested to hear her comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Cassandra, for coming and for your presentation. I did speak to Brad today, and I'm happy to see that the new Clearwater Beach Transit Center is not going to be used. I know that, first of all, tourism is our number-one industry in Tarpon Springs. And so we want that ridership to Tarpon to be efficient and pleasant and back to wherever they came from. And there were some delays with the Island Estates stop. I understand from what he said that that stop is still there for north Clearwater Beach, but not for south Clearwater Beach. Is that correct? So, because, you know, with my experience, I've waited thirty to fifty minutes, one day over an hour, to change trolleys to north Clearwater Beach and stopped riding after that. And, you know, and that was a comment I got from our tourists as well. It just took, you know, three to four hours for the total round-trip transportation. So I appreciate that, that new addition with the transit center. The one-seat ride, something that I've been, you know, asking for, for a long time. So I really appreciate that change. And I'm very supportive of these changes. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for having this discussion with us and presentation. I do have a few questions for you about the Jolly Trolley. Why isn't the PSTA run this route with their own trolleys and they're hiring an outside company to do this?
Well, there's a couple of reasons. One is the longstanding business of the Jolly Trolley, which is a not-for-profit, has been part of the beach experience for a very long time. And so that is something that we would like to do, is support local businesses. The other part of this is that the fun, way that PSTA is funding, funded, we have some issues with getting new vehicles and our vehicle replacement. And so it is actually more cost-effective for us to outsource a portion of our services in order to replace the buses that we currently have in our fleet and allow the Jolly Trolley in order to fund those other, those other vehicles within the total fleet of the Pinellas County system.
How many trolleys are there, do you know?
There, we, well, we do have our own set of trolleys, with the Sun Coast Beach Trolley. We also have Central Avenue Trolley. There are about thirty trolleys in the Jolly Trolley fleet. About fourteen are used for this fixed route service.
Okay. How are the fares collected in the Jolly Trolley? Are you aware of that?
They're collected just like they are for, for our fleet through a gen fare fare box. And the patron puts money into the fare box, and, and there is a ticket that is dispersed. A lot of the riders on the Jolly Trolley are buying day passes. So the driver often does not even touch the money. It just, the, all he or she does is make sure that that person gets their day pass.
It's like a lock box, something along those lines, and then someone else, two people will look at it, and it's audited?
Yeah. So for, for PSTA, it goes into a vault, and that vault is taken out at the end of, of the run, at the end of the day. And that is put into a locked money room, and it's counted by the people in the money room. So the operator does not touch the funding.
Yeah, but you're not aware of the Jolly Trolley, how that handles them?
They have a similar process of taking out the vault, where a separate person takes out the vault. Usually, it's from the maintenance department.
Okay. I'm just concerned, I don't know if anyone else read the article about the city of Clearwater, how they had a Parks Department employee that was taking cash. And it was like over, embezzled like a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars over the past few years over recreation. So that's why I'm just curious. So there's a lot of cash involved, I'm sure, with the Jolly Trolley and...
Well, quite frankly, our, our cash is actually down, and we're actually trying to take it even lower. We have our new flamingo fairs starting probably early next year, and that will allow people to buy their passes either through a smart card, so it'd be a reloadable smart card, or through an app. And we're really hoping to market the app to tourists, so it will be actually a cashless transaction for the most part.
Who, during the RFP process, I mean, do we look at the PNLs? It says it's a nonprofit organization. How, it's just interesting, you're saying the ridership is up, but then we want to increase by ten percent, or there's a twenty percent increase overall. That doesn't make sense, and it's hard for me to comprehend that, being from a business background, to say, revenue's up, ridership's up. It's a, it's a plus, but we're going to increase the rates of the Jolly Trolley's passing on to the cities and the PSTA by twenty percent. So can you help me understand that?
So, yes. So fare box recovery is calculated by what somebody, what the passengers are paying versus how much service we're putting out on the road. So it's usually done as a ratio of the revenue service hours cost. In this case, the majority of the people who are riding the Jolly Trolley with the three-day-a-week service were full fare passengers. So they were tourists. They were buying five-dollar daily passes. When we combined the services on the Route sixty-six with the services of the Jolly Trolley and made it one, you had a different kind of ridership makeup, meaning that you're having more workers and other people who are buying passes at a discount. If you buy a monthly pass at seventy dollars, then you, and you ride every day, twice a day, you, you, the amount of money that we're collecting per ride from that person drops. In addition to that, we have a program for the transportation disadvantaged, where people who are at the poverty level or one-hundred-and-fifty percent or lower of the poverty level can get a monthly pass for eleven dollars. And so this changes the profile of every single route we have around the county. This particular route, on the coastal route, is a very high fare box recovery in general. The one on the beach is the highest one, one we have in the entire county. And some of our routes that serve the people who need it most are actually much lower, but they are also some of the highest ridership routes.
Is that for all PSTA, or is that just for the Jolly Trolley you're talking about?
That's sort of a, in, in other areas of the county where PSTA operates, some of our fare box recovery ratios are lower. There are some that are higher.
Okay. That doesn't make sense to me, but I'm willing to move forward and continue on my other questions. Hold on one second for me. Has there been discussions, I noticed that the Jolly Trolley has advertising on the side of their trolleys. Has there been discussions with, I think the city of Tarpon would be, it would benefit the city of Tarpon a lot to add advertisement along with our agreement to continue to fund these trolleys for a nonprofit, a local business. I'm not sure how they incorporate the funding for advertising. I know most of their advertising is unfulfilled based on what I've seen. There's usually always open spots on the side of the trolley when I see them. I, I think it would be, it would behoove the city to put some type of language in the agreement to have some type of requirement for advertising for the Sponge Docks or downtown, a combination of some sort tied along with the funding. Is that an issue that you see at all?
We have done that in the past, where we have some advertising revenue go into what the total amount that we're asking for from the cities. But we also gave the fare box, a lower fare box guarantee. And so in this case, we're, we're accepting the entire fare box guarantee and not taking the small discount that the Jolly Trolley was offering for advertising. On the, on the coastal route, the advertising that, discount that the Jolly Trolley had given to PSTA and the partners in the years past had actually fallen short, meaning that the businesses along the coastal route were not meeting the goal of, of the advertising. And so we took that out of this year's agreement, and I believe is out of last year's agreement as well. I'd be happy to talk to our advertising folks to see what their current pricing is, and see if there's an opportunity for the city of Tarpon Springs or the Sponge Docks to advertise more on the Jolly Trolley.
Yeah, I, I don't think we should pay anything more. I think it should be included in our annual commitment for supporting the Jolly Trolley. Being, with that said, I visited Savannah this past week and St. Augustine and Jekyll Island. St. Augustine and Savannah both had robust trolley routes. And my wife and I both rode them all around the town, looked at the history. It was something that was very beneficial. We both really enjoyed it. It was, it's obvious, there's, it helps tourism. It was, it's obvious there's, it helps tourism. It gives the tourist something to do. I, I think there's, I think we're missing out on an opportunity if we're not getting advertising tied along with our, um, if you want to call fee that we're paying for a nonprofit local business to run this that doesn't have full advertising already on the side of their trolleys. So during discussion, when we go to make a motion for approval, I think I, I've got some further comments. So thank you for your information and, and presenting tonight.
I will tell my friend Curtis Colloba, who runs the Savannah service, that, uh, that you enjoyed his system.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Seaver has something to add.
Yes, Savannah is a wonderful, uh, trolley system and experience. Uh, what I wanted to say, first of all, I do advertise, uh, being a business owner in the Sponge Docks. I know many people that do. And I talked to, uh, Brad about, uh, the contact person. Is that still windy, uh, to contact as far as, as more advertising?
No, but I will get you the new, the new contact person.
I'll email you then, because I know the Merchants Association has advertised outside the trolley in the past and is looking to advertise again. And yeah, it, it does cost, but it's, it's worth it to our businesses. So, um, and maybe we can look into what we can do with the city. But, um, and I did also, I appreciate you asking this about ridership and how you collect the money or the tickets, because that has been brought up in the past. Um, and I think the app is a great idea and I know that a lot of people bypass us, so there is no cash, uh, uh, transaction. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Um, Cassandra, and though, forgive me if you mentioned this already, um, I think you touched on it, but, um, the reason for the increase in, um, I, I, I think you said it was their, 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 their operating costs at the, at the, at, at, at the Jolly Trolley? Well, what was their, their reasoning behind that again?
They have an annual escalation that's built into the contract and that combined with the fare box decline created the ten percent.
Okay, alright.
Could I just add one more thing?
Sure.
I want to thank, uh, Vice Mayor Banther for being on the board. Did you do all this, David?
Every bit of it.
Did you do all this?
No, no, I can take credit for this.
All these new improvements are very appreciated.
Oh, but I, I did encourage Ms., Mr. Millard to, uh, to reach out to you as he did, because I know you've had some concerns about the route and its changes. And, uh, I was like, I mean, I, you know, I've definitely been a critic of PSTA in the past. That has no mystery to, to anybody. But having been now on that board for about nine months, I mean, it, it operates at a loss. There, 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 there's, there's, there's no way around it. To a certain extent, you have to look at it as, as, as a, as a, as a public service. Kind of how, bad example, well, not, well, not a bad one, but like, 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 like our healthcare clinic. You know, it, well, it, it just now broke even, but for years that operated at a loss, but it, it, it was a benefit to our employees. That's kind of how, that's kind of how transit is. And, um, so, you know, uh, it's not, it's, it's hard to look at it as a business, because I think you'd be hard pressed by any transit agency in America that's operating in a, in a, in a profitable manner, i- i- if it's a public candidate, you know, you know, agency. But Commissioner Carr definitely brought up some, some good ideas about the city doing advertising on there. And, um, you know, perhaps maybe we should, um, have the update on the Jolly Trolley maybe twice a year, um, to help with the information. So it's not kind of all at once and we can maybe have some more input as it goes along.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item?
Beer to lax five-one-four Ashland Avenue, and I see from your badge you're with PSTA and not the Jolly Trolley. Okay. And I just want to confirm PSTA has their own trolleys separate from the Jolly Trolley trolleys?
We have the trolley.
Okay. Well, the reason why, uh, I'm, I'm bringing this up and part of the reason I think the commissioners here are questioning some of the, um, let's say, cash box accounting, is the fact that I've been here at least twice before, uh, when I've ridden the Jolly Trolley. And when I've gone on a regular PSTA bus, yeah, there is that box where you have to put the money in or your card or something and it logs it and gives you a ticket. But my experiences on the Jolly Trolley have not been that way. I've had to give the driver the cash, receive no ticket. It was just a one-way. It wasn't a round trip. So there again, uh, that money is unaccounted for. Uh, she may stick it in a box. I don't know how it works. Uh, so when you have on your screen saying, you know, increase my net fare box, our concern, at least mine, in expressing it to the board, and I think they're expressing it to you, is the accountability. And I think that's what Commissioner Carr was talking about. What's the process, uh, for, uh, accounting for that money? And I did hear you say that you're going to be putting in a, a counter. Well, that'll be nice, but how are you going to tie that up to fare box collections if on the Jolly Trolleys there is no fare box to either put in the money or, uh, account for that? And so that's something I have expressed a couple of times and I think, uh, they have expressed it too. And I just would like to reiterate, uh, because as it has been expressed, this is something we've supported over the years and it's a valuable experience. But, uh, we would like to make sure that the monetary accounting is properly being accounted for. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments on this item? Here none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next presentation is the Tarpon Springs Police School Resource Officer Program for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, Police Chief Cottin.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a- as you know, this city and the police department have always had a very strong commitment to our schools. Not only the safety of those schools, but the mentoring of kids and working with, um, the educational system, um, to basically make things better. You know, make a difference. Um, as you know, I came before you, um, after March ninth, twenty eighteen, which was when the governor signed into law the Marjory Stone and Douglas High School Public Safety Act. As you know, this act requires armed security personnel in every school, public school, to include charter schools in the whole state. The commission granted us authority to add two, uh, positions to the police department. We've since hired a bunch of people. And we really, um, revamped our SRO program where you see a whole chain of command from myself to Major Young to Sergeant Fognow and all the SROs that will be covering the schools. We have two in the high school and every other school has one. Um, all these officers are trained, they're experienced and they're ready to go. We've already started the new school year, obviously, with, uh, with the Pinellas County Public School System. So with that, I just want to turn it over to Major Young real quick. Just do a quick PowerPoint to give you an overview of the unit and then, um, we'll be able to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Board of Commissioners, it's truly an honor and a privilege to be up here before you tonight to introduce our, our SRO unit. This team is an extraordinary team. Uh, but before I get to inter- introducing them individually, I want to talk to you a little bit about how we got here. Uh, first off, what's the purpose of an SRO? You know, they, they provide a safe learning environment for everybody, the students, the staff, visitors, uh, the community as a whole. You know, I often tell, say to people that the SRO acts as a mentor, a, a teacher, a counselor, and yes, of course, a, a law enforcement officer. You know, but their daily activities can be a whole plethora of things. And they're on the campus there to provide the security, but they work in concert with the school administration. Uh, that, that partnership that we have with all our schools in, in, uh, Tarpon Springs is the most important aspect here. And it truly is a partnership with, uh, all our principals and administration. Next part's the history of our, uh, where'd we come from? Uh, in, uh, nineteen ninety-six, we took, uh, our first SRO out at the middle school. Shortly after that, in two thousand and five, uh, we wrote a grant and got one of the first, uh, elementary school SROs anywhere. Uh, that was through the cops office and commission approved that grant. And that was something that, uh, then Chief Lacoris drove to, to bring to this, uh, city. And we were one of the first ones, not only in the county, obviously, but throughout the nation, to have a SRO assigned to the elementary schools. And so it's not a new concept for us here to have elementary school SROs. Uh, in two thousand and seven, we took over responsibilities out of Tarpon High. We have two out there. We've had two officers out there for quite a period of time now. Uh, actually, since, since we took it over, we immediately had two officers out there. So that was something that was important to us to, to continue through that. The requirements for an officer, uh, the three officers that just joined the team, uh, recently went through, uh, school resource officer training this past week, uh, through FASRO, um, and, you know, which is the Florida Association of School Resource Officers. So they got full training there and as long as the rest of the team that went down there for the conference and get all the updated information, uh, through their, through the conference. The activities of that SRO, like I said, it could be anything on any given day. But they're there every day out walking the hallways. They're there for the students. They're there for the staff and they're there for, as a resource as well for the, uh, parents. And this is something that, you know, everybody can be proud that this, uh, this team is standing ready in every school. And that, that goes across the board for law enforcement everywhere and, but we're especially proud of our team. And at this time, I want to take the time to introduce our, uh, team. First off, Sergeant Fognow, he's the unit supervisor. Officer Lang, he's our SRO out of Tarpon Springs Middle School. He's been there for a few years now. Uh, next up is Officer Christine Brinker. She's new to the unit. She's going to be assigned to Tarpon Springs Elementary School. And we have Officer Robert Galatley. He's going to be a, he's new to the unit also. He'll be out at Tarpon Springs Fundamental School. Next up, who we got up there? Officer Mike Trinidad, he's a, a new SRO being assigned out at the high school. Then the big guy getting up, it's going to take him a while. Officer Thiel, he, he's a veteran out at the, uh, high school. And then down at the end is, uh, Officer Volker, who is a veteran of the unit also. He's, uh, was overseeing all the elementary schools. And like I said, this team here is ready to stand strong in the schools and we appreciate the support of the, of the commission, uh, in this endeavor. Thank you very much. Team?
Uh, thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Good. Yes, yes, Mayor, we would.
You like a picture? Y'all come up back up front?
Chief and, uh, Major Young, thank you for introducing the, uh, SRO team to the, to the people of Tarpon Springs. We are very glad and very proud to have this, uh, awesome team. And, uh, I, I tell you, this is a, a great program that we have. And it's a great partnership that we have between the Pinellas County School District and us, the, uh, Tarpon Springs Police Department, and providing the, uh, safe and, uh, and excellent, uh, environment, learning environment to our students. Um, as you mentioned, that, uh, the SRO program is something that was started way before it was mandated by the state. So it's something that we should be proud of. We're the, uh, the leaders. And, uh, I'd like to, uh, recognize the person who started all these at the time was Chief Lacoris and now City Manager Lacoris. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, uh, thank you guys for their presentation and thank you. I appreciate all of you. As a former educator and counselor, I work closely with every SRO in, in schools that I, um, served. So, uh, I, I definitely appreciate what you do and, and I'm thankful we have you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I spent a lot of time in four of the five schools that are here in Tarpon Springs, uh, growing up in the area. It's great to see that Tarpon Springs has a presence, uh, with their police force, uh, there to protect, uh, the students that are there. It's very important, I think, to all of us here on the board and all of us, uh, as residents, uh, throughout the city too. So thank you for all your service and, and dedication in protecting, uh, all the students and faculty.
Yes, thank you. I, I want to thank, um, each one of you. I couldn't do your job at all, uh, not only being a, being a, uh, a, a, a police officer, but also working in schools. That's very difficult. And I'm, I'm very happy that, uh, this commission lends them our, our full support. And unlike a lot of communities, we, we, we did, we did not skip and just put, you know, uh, you know, unsworn armed guards in there. We, we chose the best, the brightest. I think that, uh, ours, ours will, will stand, 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 stand ready i- i- if, 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 if something happens. So I just want to thank the board and the, and, and the public for, 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 uh, being, being behind it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item?
Yeah, one thing that wasn't mentioned, and I, and I'd like to mention it, is that we have a local, we're, we have a local police force. And as SROs and a local police force, their impact is beyond the school, because they, you know, those youths, youths, that, uh, are, 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 are in school, they see the same officers out in the community. And so that's, that's, to me, that's just as important as being an SRO, is that they are seeing these police officers out in the community. So it goes beyond just the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beer to lax five-one-four Ashland Avenue. Good point, Mike. For years, uh, there were many times in the past, people had said, oh, we gotta go with the sheriffs. And as, just as Mike has said, this is the reason why we haven't. At this point, what I would like to say to you is you will be facing many different types of challenges. I don't know how many of you have kids. Those I know, I know Bob does. But, uh, in dealing with kids, you're going to run into a lot of different situations. Maybe you haven't necessarily been trained for. So what I'm going to ask is may God bless you. May he give you strength, wisdom, common sense, perseverance, open eyes, open ears. Because you are going to be a connection between some of these kids and potentially some of them having issues that need help beyond the school shootings or, or any of these violent threats that we may have. So I ask that God look out for you and that you look out for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Here none. Thank you so much. Thank you for your service. And now Mr. Bob Robinson is going to give us an update on the Ankle River Dredge Project.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. And, uh, as the mayor says, I'm here tonight to give you a brief update on the Ankle River Dredge Project. Um, this update will be based on the memorandum that was uploaded to the website last week and was provided in your backup. So, um, the project work continues by the United States Army Corps of Engineers. As you know, this project falls under the jurisdiction of the Army Corps and is being monitored by the city staff, me and Karen. The project is currently in a design and permitting phase and it's... The other question that I have is if the construction bid process will begin early of 2019, do we have any feeling when the project will begin and will be completed?
I don't have an estimate yet on the dredge schedule, but it's not a very long process, relatively speaking. I think the last estimate I saw would be six months to do the actual dredge. Takes more time to get design and permitting done than actually to do the work. But when I have that, of course, we'll provide that information to the board and my updates to the public.
Thank you. And again, I'd like to take this opportunity to express my gratitude to everyone involved in this project, the elected officials, the staff, and all the citizens, especially the citizens there for all the work that they've been doing for this project. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Bob, for this update. It's nice to have this update, that we have our federal funding. Now, I remember when this was started, I think it was back in 2014 or whatever, with a group of citizens, and I never thought that we would get funding this quickly on all the various levels. And I do like how everything from the county to the federal government is playing their proper role. I appreciate your oversight of this process. I'm sure you'll be, I assume that once the, as the work progresses or speeds up to progress, you'll be reporting back to us more.
Absolutely.
And I just appreciate all that you've done to help make this happen. And, but Mark, I think we at least need updates every 60 days on this, just because we're, it's not actually, though it's not actually going, 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 going to happen. I think as, when we approach the time of the dredge itself, we'll need to reach out or have something with the merchants and property owners down there to let them know what's going to happen and any, you know, any interruptions or what have you. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Seaver.
Thanks, Bob, for the update, and I want to thank everybody that was involved in this project, and I'm glad it's finally coming to fruition, and I'm anxious for that. You know, from the beginning, I've asked about the sediment and what's going to happen to it, and can we use it on our beaches? And I see that you're working with Pasco County and Anclot Park. Have we looked at using Sunset Beach or?
Yeah, in fact, they've considered all three of those, Sunset and Howard Park, as well as the Anclot River Park. The Anclot River Park has some obvious advantages, being right on the river. And not having to pump it over to, or truck it or haul it, or, you know, barge it over to Howard or Sunset. But it is one of the three. Sunset is one of the three.
Okay, that's good. I just wanted to follow up on that. Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Mayor. Bob, I've got a couple of questions for you. Again, I want to reiterate, whatever else is said on the boards is great news. Thank you for the update. It's exciting to see that the federal government came through for Tarpon Springs and really sees the importance of having this river dredged and funding it. Isn't a lot of this silt? So are you familiar, like, what's actually going to come out of the river? Can it be used on a beach even?
Yeah, in fact, some initial work by the Army Corps did some geotechnical testing, and they did the silt density checking, and the silt content was very low, so they were able to recommend that possibility. We weren't assuming that early on. So, I mean, when we looked at the sites, we were assuming that we were going to have to store and treat, dewater 100% of the sediment. So it was really good news to see that the quality was such good, at a good level.
That's good news. I've got a quick question about the $3.5 million that was awarded to the city. When do we go to bid? Maybe we could sit down and have a further conversation about this. All the companies know that it's $3.5 billion, or $3.5 million has been awarded, so are all the bids going to come in at $3.5 million? Or do we look at additional space that they could dredge, or certain depths they could dredge, per cubic foot that we look at, the cost-wise? Or can you just give a quick?
Well, sure, just a reminder that that $3.5 million is federal money to a federal agency for a federal project. So we don't really get involved with the procurement, but I understand your question and the intent of what you're asking. You know, I think when a company is bidding on a project, they have every right to ask what the budget is. That's part of a public record anyway.
Right.
So knowing it doesn't really affect it, and that's part of the competitive process. If you can put in a bid that's lower than that, then, you know, you have a chance of winning the job.
Okay, so if, let's say, a bid comes in at $3 million, there's still half a million dollars that just goes back to the Army Corps, or is there?
We don't get any of that money.
Okay.
It's handled entirely by the Army Corps. They use the federal appropriation to pay a contractor. We're just here to, as, kind of to facilitate and provide a site for the spoils. So we're not involved in the procurement.
Okay.
On how that process goes. I understand where you're coming from.
I was just curious, right?
It's kind of hard for me as a project manager to be hands-off like that, but that's how it works.
I guess it just goes back in the pot if they don't hit the $3.5 million, then?
I would assume so, yeah.
Okay. Do you, and just one other question, is this, do you know if this takes into place the turnaround by Captain Jacks that encompasses that area too?
Yes. The turning basin is included in the project.
All right. Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Are there any public comments on this item? Are there any public comments on this item? Here, none? Thank you, Bob. We are now going to the consent agenda. Number four is the minutes. A, May 8, 2018, regular session. B is May 22, 2018, regular session. C is June 12, 2018, regular session. D is June 21, 2018, work session. E is June 26, 2018, regular session. And F is July 10, 2018, regular session. Number five is satisfaction, the release of liens. Number six is special events. A is the Labor Day Sponge Docks Arts and Crafts Show, September 1st through the 3rd, 2018. B is back to the, back to school bash, December 8, 2018. And C is zombie run, October 6, 2018. Number seven is to authorize execution of amendment, second to the cost route funding agreement with Pinellas Suncoast Transit Authority, the PSTA. Number eight is the award FRP number 180121, PCM Gulf Car Leasing. Number nine is the approved change order number one for bid number 180046, BJJ Pope Street, Athens Street, Grand Boulevard, sidewalk and curve replacement. And number 10 is the year 2018 service agreement with Pinellas County Sheriff. A is the award file number 19001, NRS CAD, RMS, and miscellaneous services. And B is to authorize execution of interlocal service agreement with Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. We also have an addendum to approve agreement for conducting the injunction municipal election. Are there any items that you'd like to pull?
Number seven.
Number seven. Any other items that you'd like to pull? Any, any commission comments on the items four through 10, including the addendum, with the exception number seven?
Just, it's good to see there's some additional work along Athens, although it's a little bit more money right now on number nine. It's nice to see that it's going to be fixed, and it's, we're not going to have to address it in years to come. So it's good to see that project moving forward too.
Any other commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item?
Good evening, commissioners. It's nice to be able to come back and watch all in action. Anita Protus, 901 Bay Shore Drive. The work down on Athens Street and the sidewalks, what are you going to do with the granite? Because it's still sitting there, and as some of you know, I do ride around the city 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the morning when I can't sleep. I take rides all around town to see what I can see going on, and I have seen people picking up that granite, putting it on their trucks, and I've called it in, and I told Commissioner Banther about it. It's sitting there, and years ago, when we would tear up the granite, the city would take it, and we used it out at the cemetery and around town. And it's still sitting there. It's expensive, and you can't get it anymore like that. So what are we doing with the granite that's been taken out? Mr. City Manager? What are we doing with the granite? It's a lot of money.
Can I?
Yeah. Are you finished? We'll answer your question when you're finished with the public.
I'm finished with the question, then I have one more question to ask.
Why don't you ask the other question, and then we answer.
Are we going to thank the congressman in Georgia that helped us get the money for the dredging? I think it would be nice to give him a letter from the city.
Thank you.
Without his help, we wouldn't have gotten it.
Thank you.
Okay, what about the granites?
Regarding the granite curbing, she's talking about the old granite curbing that's taken up. We collect it, and we do store it, and we do keep it, and reuse it where we can. It's under Tom Punch's control. He keeps it over at the yard waste. So there may be some stockpiled over at the project site, but it does need to get removed by the contractor and bring it over to our stores, to our security site.
Make sure that gets done.
Yes, sir.
They've been picking it up at 3:00, 3:30 in the morning.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Commissioner Carr, you had something to say? Are you sure? Okay. The chair will detain the motion.
Second.
Enroll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes. Now we're going to the item number seven. Commissioner Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to discuss this. Obviously, I brought it up earlier pertaining to advertising for the city, something that's not business-specific. I see the trolleys all the time going up and down the roads, and there's a lot of open advertising space on there. As a city, I think we should look at something along the lines of doing something for downtown, visit Tarpon Springs, visit the Sponge Docks, visit Sunset Beach, I'm not really sure what it is, to add it into this agreement that we have before us and not just approve the funding. I'm completely in support of the trolley system. I think it's a good thing, like I mentioned earlier. If you all aren't interested in adding this as part of the agreement, maybe we could look at, the next step is if there's open signage available to where nobody is willing to pay for advertising, then maybe the city of Tarpon should automatically slot in there. So there's two options that I think we could look at, is requiring advertising to be on the trolley, or second, if there's not someone willing to pay for advertising, there's open slots, then have the city of Tarpon Springs slot in one of those slots. So I'm not sure what anybody else's thoughts are about that. We are paying a significant amount of money for the trolley service, which is a benefit, I think, overall to the town, but I think we're still missing out on an opportunity here.
Marketing the city has always been beneficial, so I'll go along with that as well.
I understand what you're saying, but we're not the only city in partnership, and so if we did that, probably they'd have to open it up to all the cities. And as Vice Mayor Banther said, it's, you know, it's a losing proposition with PSTA. So, you know, I understand that the Merchants Association would love free marketing, but I don't know that that's feasible because they would have to be done with the other cities that are in partnership as well.
Then you rotate. I mean, if there's, like, there's usually like three or four spots open, I'm not sure if you've seen, I mean, the trolleys.
I know, I know.
So we could come up with, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if any other cities are bringing this up or not. If Tarpon's the only one bringing it up, then Tarpon should be the one that should at least get the first cut at it. But then if we want to talk about the other cities, Clearwater, Dunedin, et cetera, then we work out in the agreement also, that say you have a rotating, I don't know what you call it, rotating, when there's an open spot, then the one city falls in, and the next open spot is the next city of Tarpon, city of Dunedin, city of Clearwater. My interest is the city of Tarpon. I don't, my interest isn't in the city of Clearwater or Dunedin, but I understand we're in this together. So if you feel that might be better to include all of them, I think that's a discussion still to be had.
Yeah, it's just a precedent, is what I'm saying. So I have to look into that.
Yeah, thank you. As I said earlier, I think marketing is very important, and I will ask Mr. Licorice if it's possible to discuss it and if we can negotiate, if there is possible way that we can.
Well, I just don't see time, we've had this contract and done it for a long time. We've negotiated with partners, and to now put this clause in this one, I don't see that it's feasible, not open up discussion to see if there's something to do, advertising and stuff. You saw the figures, you saw it, I just don't see this as a time with this contract to put it in. I'm not as sure that, you know, they're going to agree to it, that's something that needs to be worked with and negotiated with it, I just don't see it in this contract here.
Yes, thank you. I mean, I certainly agree with Commissioner Carr, I just expressed the concerns of Commissioner Seaver, that I just don't know if it's feasible, you know, and I would not want to tie up for something like that, our support of this. I don't think you all can talk like that, can you, or no? Mayor, do you mind?
No, that'd be fine. Sandra, you can, yeah.
I do have here with me tonight Bob Clifford, who's the chair of the Jolly Trolley. I will tell you that the city of Dunedin does pay for advertising already, in addition to their current contribution to this agreement. We have had not any additions of advertising to this agreement since its exemption.
Okay. I just, Mark, I want to comment about something, and it really upsets me, to be honest with you. When you say this isn't the time to talk about it, and we've already negotiated the contract, why is it coming before us when we can't make any changes at this time? So to me, as a commissioner, that's frustrating.
You can make, I'm just saying the way.
Because it isn't the time to do it. When is the time? So should we have seen it two months ago for us to make adjustments? I don't want to be just a stamp person that comes up and says, stamp, and let's send it through. I respect your position and your hard work that you do for the city and what the city attorney does for the city, but at the same time, if there's an opportunity to, I think, extend the taxpayers' money, and I think I brought up a couple of good points, even if the city of Dunedin's on there, if there's open spots with nobody advertising at all, it's just blank space. So I'm not sure when the time is to have this discussion. My interest is the city of Tarpon. I don't, my interest isn't in the city of Clearwater or Dunedin, but I understand we're in this together. So if you feel that might be better to include all of them, I think that's a discussion still to be had.
Yeah, it's just a precedent is what I'm saying. So I have to look into that.
Yeah, thank you. As I said earlier, I think marketing is very important and I will ask Mr. Licorice if it's possible to discuss it and if we can negotiate, if there is possible way that we can.
Well, I just don't see time that we've had this contract and done it for a long time. We've negotiated with partners and to now put this clause in this one, I don't see that it's feasible. Now to open up discussion to see if there's, there's something to do advertising and stuff. You saw the figures, you saw it. I just don't see this as a time with this contract to, to put it in. I'm not as sure that, you know, they're going to agree to it. That's something that needs to be worked with and negotiated with it. I just don't see it in this contract here.
I mean, I certainly agree with Commissioner Carr. I just expressed the concerns of Commissioner Seber. I, I, I just don't know if it's feasible, you know, and I, 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 I would not want to tie up for something like that or, 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 or support of this. I don't, I don't think you all can talk like, can you or no?
No, that'd be fine. Sandra, you can, yeah.
I do have here with me tonight Bob Clifford, who's the Chair of the Jolly Trolley. I will tell you that the city of Dunedin does pay for advertising already in addition to their current contribution to this agreement. We have had not any additions of advertising to this agreement since its exemption.
Okay. I just, Mark, I want to comment about something and it really upsets me, to be honest with you. When you say this isn't the time to talk about it and we've already negotiated the contract, why is it coming before us when we can't make any changes at this time? So to me, as a commissioner, that's frustrating.
You can make cha, I'm just saying the way.
Because it's not the time to do it. When is the time? So should we have seen it two months ago for us to make adjustments? I don't want to be just a stamp person that comes up and says stamp and let's send it through. I respect your position and your hard work that you do for the city and what the, what the city attorney does for the city. But at the same time, if there's an opportunity to, I think, extend the taxpayers' money and I think I brought up a couple of good points, even if the city of Dunedin's on there, there's open spots with nobody advertising at all, it's just blank space. So I'm, I'm not sure when the time is to have this discussion.
Vice Mayor. So some, so Commissioner Carr's concerns can be addressed and I would, you know, I would hope that we would get full support of this, of this agreement. And also, Commissioner Kika's input, are we under any extreme timestamp to get to, to get this done at this meeting? Can it be deferred? Is that possible? It can be deferred? It can be deferred? There's no prices?
They can address from there in.
Our new fiscal year starts October first and so we'd like to have all these agreements completed as soon as possible so that we can have the service change on October seventh without an interruption in service.
You'll, you'll have it at our next meeting, but I would most of the.
So, so what I was saying before, obviously, as you know, we got a partner Dunedin who is paying for it. But that's where I think the problem is of negotiating. Obviously, if you want to tell the, the trolley disagreement goes, if they give us a free advertising, but you got the perfect right to do it. I'm just saying now you've got a city that they're going to have to go back with and deal with that pays for advertising. So I'm not saying.
Do you mind if I ask a question real quick? Ms. Borcher's, Dunedin is paying for advertising. Is that agreement not with, directly with Jolly Trolley though? Is it, or is with PSTA?
Yes, it is, it is not through the PSTA contract.
It's not done through, and it's not done through their funding agreement either.
No, it is not.
Okay. So I, I'm just thinking legally, Commissioner, that I'm trying to determine how we would contractually obligate Jolly Trolley to do something through the funding agreement with PSTA, which is kind of a different, it's kind of one level of attenuation. I don't, I don't know that we could do that. We couldn't, we couldn't obligate P, obligate Jolly Trolley through the PSTA.
That is correct.
I'm not asking like for the world on this. It's if there's open advertising spots, I'm just saying I think it should be representative of the people supporting the trolley or something along those lines. I would second Vice Mayor's motion to defer this to another meeting so we can have some further discussions about some possibilities.
Mayor, can I just make, I make comment?
Yeah.
And, and I'm motioning to defer. I mean, this is not my hill to die on. I'm, I am fine with this agreement as is and I am not supportive as is. But, you know, if I have a colleague who feels strongly enough that there's changes that have to be made and we can defer it without harm, I, I, I don't see any harm in deferring it to, no, I would want no later than, than, than the next meeting. So I would amend my motion to have it deferred to the next meeting, which is what? The twenty-first, correct? To the twenty-first. And, and in between that time, if, 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 if Mark, you've worked with, with, with Commissioner Carr to see if his concerns can, 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 can be addressed, perhaps reach out to the Jolly Trolley and get that done there. But I'd rather, I'd rather have that done, I'm not saying, I would say, rather have that done with you all and not on, on, on this board last minute.
Well, we have a motion in a second. Roll call please. Hold on a second. Let me, let me go over the public comments before we do that. Do we have any public comments on this item?
You need a second on that amendment. Do we have a second on the amendment? We did, okay.
Can I just make a comment before we vote?
Is, is, is Commissioner Borcher fine with my date?
Yes.
Bob Clifford, fourteen oh six Manatee Circle, Tarpon Springs. I'm a resident here as well as chairman of the board of the Jolly Trolley. The advertising is controlled by the Jolly Trolley. We are more than happy to meet with you all, have a discussion about how that works. Please keep in mind that we do have other entities that pay significant amount of money to advertise on the side of those. So it becomes extremely difficult to be able to give anything away. It wouldn't be fair to them and I don't think in your businesses that you would accommodate that, that type of thing. But that being said, more than happy to sit down with the city, with the city manager, Mr. Carr, happy to come in and, and meet with you and explain how the trolley works and what, what the system is and what opportunities may be there to be able to accommodate the requests that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Here none? Commissioner Seber has something to say?
Yeah, I just want to say I, I agree with you, David. I would approve this tonight because the advertising portion of it is with Jolly Trolley. I pay to advertise with Jolly Trolley. And so, you know, I'd be happy to discuss it further, but no later than next, next meeting for the approval.
Roll call please.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozis?
Yes. We are now going to the special concern agenda, item number eleven. Request for according force, lien settlement nineteen oh seven Lexington Place.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We've received through the office a request to settle a lien. Principal amount of lien is a May fifteen was forty-six five seventy-nine zero six. This is for the property at nineteen oh seven Lexington Place on a code enforcement lien dating back to August of two thousand sixteen. Attorney Trask of my office has negotiated a settlement in the amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars and we request your permission to enter into that settlement agreement. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any commission comments, questions? Are there any public comments on this item? I need a motion?
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozis?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the ordinance and resolutions. Item number thirteen and item fourteen are related, will be discussed together, but we're going to vote separately. The item number thirteen is the ordinance two thousand eighteen dash thirteen, the application eighteen dash thirty-seven Slater annexation twelve fifty-three North Pinellas Avenue. This is a second reading. And the item fourteen is the ordinance two thousand eighteen dash seventeen, the application eighteen sixty-eight resoning for Slater. This is a second reading. This part is quasi judicial. The city attorney will read the title and he will explain the quasi judicial process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of the fact that a full quasi judicial hearing has been held on ordinance twenty eighteen dash seventeen on its first reading, I'm simply going to ask those who intend to be sworn at the appropriate time to please be sworn and update the commissioner on any changed circumstances regarding the application. At this time, then I'll read the two ordinances and then we can swear in any witnesses, including our staff. Ordinance twenty eighteen dash thirteen, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, annexing lots six, seven, sixteen and seventeen, block eleven, Fairview subdivision, is recorded in plat book nine, page eighteen of the public records of Pinellas County, Florida. Less public rights of way and consisting of zero point five two acres, more or less, of real property located on North Pinellas Avenue in section one, times of twenty-seven south, range fifteen east, providing for findings and providing an effective date. Second reading of ordinance twenty eighteen dash thirteen by title only was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on May four and June eight, two thousand eighteen. Ordinance twenty eighteen dash seventeen, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, admitting the official zoning map of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida for approximately zero point five two acres of property located at one two five three North Pinellas Avenue, apps eighteen dash sixty-eight, including lots six, seven, sixteen and seventeen, block eleven, Fairview subdivision, from Pinellas County zoning designation P one, general professional office district, to Tarpon Springs zoning designation R O residential office district, providing for findings and providing effective date. Second reading of ordinance twenty eighteen dash seventeen by title only. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only with a map on June twenty-nine and July twenty-seven, two thousand eighteen. At this time, I'd ask for anyone who intends to testify this evening to please stand and be sworn. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding? Is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Ms. Earl Ruler, is our applicant present this evening?
He is not.
Okay. So we will simply hear from Ms. Earl Ruler for updates and whatever else she wishes to present.
Yes, on, good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. Heather Ruler staff to this application and your planning and zoning director. These two applications are finally coinciding and coming together. There has been no additional information since the last readings on both of these applications and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Seeing no questions, we look for a motion and a vote on ordinance twenty eighteen dash thirteen.
Motion to approve.
And roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah.
This is for ordinance twenty eighteen dash thirteen.
This is the eighteen thirteen.
Commissioner Seber?
Your public.
Mr. Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozis?
Yes, thank you. The item of fourteen, which the ordinance two thousand eighteen dash seventeen, is there any public comments on that here? I won't say any motion.
Motion to approve.
And roll call.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. We are now going to the item fifteen, which is the ordinance two thousand eighteen dash nineteen, submitting referendum for a proposed extension of the amendment to the lease between the city of Tarpon Springs and the Tarpon Springs Hospital Foundation. This is a second reading. The city attorney will read the order.
Ordinance number twenty eighteen dash nineteen, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, submitting to the electors of the city of Tarpon Springs, a proposed extension of an amendments to the lease between the city of Tarpon Springs and the Tarpon Springs Hospital Foundation and providing for an effective date here of second reading ordinance twenty eighteen dash nineteen by title only, published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on July twenty-seven, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, during the last meeting, I had asked you to read and explain the lease agreement to ensure that it was clear and understood by everyone here. Today, I'd like to ask you to tell us if the lease agreement violates in the city charter in any way.
No, sir, not in my opinion.
Okay. We received a letter from a citizen who is concerned about the lease agreement. He says that the city is accepting responsibility for the hospital employees, including their liabilities if the foundation defaults. How do you see that?
That language did not change from the original iteration of the lease or the, the two thousand iteration of the lease. That language did not anticipate changing in section eight point two. Some language changed in section eight point two. But that section remains today unaffected by this proposed amendment.
Vice Mayor Penther, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, and the comments are not individuals have tenure in, in this area. So I'm, I'm thankful that the city manager, or the city manager, that told the city attorney to respond appropriately. Hope of the court, Mr. Vaticos' comments, I'm, I'm a public comment to see if this cures questions. As well, I received a question, Jay, can you opine on if the city can sublet, or sorry, if the hospital can, can sublet the property?
And if any member of the hospital team that I see here today would like to jump in at any point, please do that. Sublease was not a, not a subject of the negotiations relative to this, this amendment. And I do not see that in a very brief search of the document today.
The microphone has to come up.
Ms. Tepper, would you like to come to the microphone and address the question?
I'm Lori Tepper and I'm the Regional Chief Legal Officer for Adventist Health System and representing Florida Hospital North Pinellas. So thank you for letting me clarify, determine the lease. Under section seven point one of the lease executed in two thousand, there is no ability for the hospital to transfer or assign the lease without the permission and written approval of the city commissioners and upon referendum of the voters of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
And, and there were, there were, there was concern that there was something in the, in the one release where the hospital could borrow against the city, the, against the building? Is that in there at all?
Yeah, that was subject of the negotiation that we had this last round. As previously written, the hospital from a, from a financing standpoint needed to operate as kind of a self-contained entity, if you will, was not allowed to seek outside financing. Now, bear in mind that the hospital is now a part of a larger, a larger medical and hospital group and in order to leverage that, the, the proposed amendment seeks to permit that. Bear in mind, however, that after, after a couple of months of negotiation between city manager, myself and the hospital's team, the city will, will enjoy the benefit of a, of a guarantee in the event that, that financing becomes problematic for the city, which certainly we've been assured that, that, that will not be an issue. But even if it is, the city has adequate legal protections in place where, under the proposed amendment, the city, in my, in my judgment, is, has no more exposure to, to an inability to pay rent than it did before.
Well, I mean, let's just say, and I mean, I'm getting account of this above, above, above my pay grade though. So, you know, like I'm against your house. We can't, I know they self-financialize those ways that, 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 they, that they, 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 they do that. But is there, so what, what, what protections are in there for whatever financing they're allowed to do? If the building is used as whatever collateral is allowed, that if there was any kind of foreclosure act, so extreme, what, what protection is there for, for, for the city with that?
Right. I think it might be best to turn that question over to Ms. Tepper and Mr. Dunkle, if you please.
Sure. So it is secured against the counts receivables of the hospital and not the asset, if you will, of the hospital. So just, just.
Eternal, it's not related.
Exactly. Exactly. So.
My, my, my last question. Is there anything in the lease that, obviously, we are, we are, we are, we are likely to rent, so I'm in advance and that's not refundable, as I said before, correct? So is there any provisions of them leaving the building empty? Obviously, we have their money, but I mean, and I'm, I'm not quite sure why they would want to leave the, 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 the building empty after, after they paid for it. Is there any provision there at all for if they vacate the premises after, after so long? I mean, obviously, they, they can't, they can't, you know, sublet. So if they just leave the property, what are, what are, what are the terms in the lease that allow us to, to, to take back control?
If they relinquish control and we, under section eight point two, we, we get a hospital, essentially. The only, we made some provisions in here for the license to operate the hospital. But again, I think the question of whether the city is legally authorized to itself operate the hospital without the appropriate qualifications and licensure would be at issue anyway. So yes, we, we would have everything that exists on the lease premises. And, and again, that language hasn't changed. That, that is not new to this proposed amendment, that, that existed before. When, when we negotiated this, there were some, there were some negotiations concerning the city's refund to, to the hospital for the cost of capital expenditures and the like, and that was negotiated out. That was not something, not a change that we were comfortable with from this end. And so the language is functionally unchanged in that regard.
Thank you. And along with your memo and, and the, and the also response, that, that answered my questions.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes, thank you. Yeah. Vice Mayor Banther, some of the questions that you had were the same ones I had and they've been answered with getting Mr. Vaticos' letter today. It was kind of hectic to try to go through all this. But my concern was that, well, first of all, I think with the upfront money, if invested, and it should be, even conservatively, will, will yield enough money for the payments for the future lease and, and the, and the other thing I was questioning is we're not giving up any ownership with this agreement, correct?
No, Commissioner, nothing. No, Commissioner, nothing, nothing really changes here, that.
I wanted to make sure that, um, the other questions have been answered already. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I've got all my questions answered, I believe, in our workshop in our last meeting, and then all the other questions that have been asked tonight. So, thank you for answering those and bringing this forward.
We're now going to the, uh, public comment.
Go ahead, please. Mike Kuskudis, six two three East Harpen Avenue. As everybody knows, I'm vice chairman of the board of the hospital, also sit on the foundation. I'm not going to go and relive the history of the hospital, where, where it, where it was, where it is, or where it's going. But suffice it to say that, to the extent that this is a successful, uh, referendum, you're looking at about a, over thirty billion dollar improvement to a city-owned asset. So, you know, you know, citizens who are listening or watching, to keep that in mind with regard to, you know, an asset that's owned by the city, um, that quite frankly has some, a lot of issues with regard to the structure of the building, um, and improvements that need to be made. And, you know, I, I could tell you, 'cause I sit on the board, is you're not, you're looking at in excess of a thirty million dollar improvement to the, to a hospital, I mean, city-owned asset. So, just keep that in mind, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes.
Costa Vaticiotis, uh, five thirty-eight West Cedar Street, Tarpon Springs. Um, I didn't follow all the conversation, 'cause I forgot to put my hearing aids in this evening, so I apologize for that. But I do want to be, uh, constructive this evening as well, um, so I, I have a few things to do. I have a lot of history with the hospital, as you well know. I was city manager when we wound up going into a declaratory judgment against the foundation, and we won that. And one of the main reasons that we went into that was basically clarity. There was no documentation or memorializing actions at the foundation, um, who owned what or anything like that, and we resolved that. And I'd hate for us to get into that same situation again. And that was the basis of my, uh, my text message to the city manager, and then forwarding it to some of the commissioners as well. You know, the, um, the hospital is basically one of the two largest assets we have besides the golf course. So, it's, from my perspective, it's, it needs to be steel-plated in terms of protection. Um, I don't have an issue with UCH. UCH was the runner-up to the Columbia HCA uh, back in the nineteen nineties, and I don't have an issue with Florida Hospital. Florida Hospital was a contender back in the nineteen nineties. I think they're great. I'm glad they're not-for-profit, and I'm glad they're here, and I think we're fortunate to, uh, to have them. I don't have an issue with the lease extension. And I don't even have an issue with a one hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, between twenty forty and twenty seventy, as long as you're aware that that's what you're getting. Personally, I'm not for any lease payment from the hospital. I'd prefer that money to go back into, uh, healthcare for the community. So, I want to make sure I'm clear on that. And, but I do have an issue with that money being taken, um, away from future commissions. Um, I, I, I particularly have a hard time, um, accepting that. The, I saw a text message that Mr. Degenau, um, had sent to some people about stating that I was wrong as far as the ownership. I want to make sure you understand that I stand one hundred percent behind the text message that I sent today. And I want to connect the dots for you. It's real important for you to follow, and if you don't have an understanding of what I'm saying, I strongly recommend that you defer this item until you get understanding of it. I had already gone through this, and I spent countless hours trying to understand this whole relationship between the foundation and the City of Tarpon Springs. I wrote the charter amendment, section thirty-three of the city charter defining the city hospital, and I used the foundation's Articles of Incorporation to do that. Not only that, the foundation cannot change their Articles of Incorporation unless they go to referendum. So, everything that happened way back then is still applicable today. As far as the ownership and the reversionary, the city charter, uh, is very clear. Article ten, article ten of the Tarpon Springs Hospital Foundation Articles of Incorporation states that upon its dissolution, all, all of the Tarpon Springs Hospital's foundation's assets, tangible and intangible, shall under the jurisdiction of the secret court of Pinellas County, Florida, be distributed to the City of Tarpon Springs. That includes the emergency room in Palm Harbor, if it's owned by the Tarpon Springs Hospital Foundation. That is in the hospital foundation's charter. That's point number one. If we now go to the lease amendment, as it's being presented to you tonight, section six, lease premises and hospital founded facilities, it's basically a definition of what those are. It basically states that it's the, um, land and the acute hospital, uh, facilities that are on that land. But the important part is what's not part of that lease premises and hospital foundations. Accordingly, the term leased premises, hospital found facilities and additional facilities, as defined in section two point one of the lease and used in the lease, shall not include, shall not include any land or improvements owned now and hereafter in fee simple by the foundation. That's completely contrary to not only the city charter, the hospital foundation's own charter.
Mr. Vaticios, I hate to interrupt you.
I think that's a little different, pardon me?
I hate to interrupt you, but your time has expired. Would you please finish up?
Did I say something wrong?
No, no. I said that I hate to interrupt you, but your time has expired. If you please.
My time?
Yes.
Okay, I just have one more point. Section nine. On the, um.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Le, you have two more minutes, sir.
I'm, I'm almost done.
Thank you.
Section nine on the reversion. It said that the hospital facilities as a going concern with the city and the foundation taking such actions as are legal and appropriate to effect transfer of licenses, permits, employees, and all other attributes of ownership, operation of the hospital facilities as defined in section six, which doesn't include the things that I mentioned it doesn't include in section six. Again, that's contrary to the city charter and the hospital foundation's own Articles of, uh, of, uh, incorporation. That's how we got into a lawsuit in nineteen ninety-five. I suggest you get somebody, a hospital attorney, somebody to take a look and scrub this lease before you go forward. I don't think you understand what you're getting into, and I would really be cautious of section eleven, no other hospital. I've seen that before in nineteen ninety-five, and it's being played again today. I can't blame any of the hospital foundation or Florida Hospital or UCH. They're in business. They need to survive in this difficult environment, and I think something can be worked out, but there's definitely conflicts in this lease that's being presented today. Um, the one last thing, what it doesn't have, and I'd like to see added, is a provision or a section that acknowledges that the, the Tarpon Springs Foundation acknowledges the, the validity of section thirty-three, city hospital in its entirety. That's not in there. It needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the information. Any other public comment?
Um, good evening. My name is John Terapany, twenty-two North Spring Boulevard. Just for the historical record, I was chairman of the Health Facilities Authority that was in charge of thirty million dollars worth of bonds for the hospital, and we successfully paid those bonds off at no loss to the, to the bondholders. I was, I've also sat on the hospital foundation board for nine years in the past, and I, I have some questions I'd like to ask Mr. Degenau. Are you, uh, do you have a practice that, uh, do you do healthcare in your general practice?
No.
Mr. Le Corus, do you do healthcare practice?
May we ask him to do this?
Can you please make your comments, so then we ask those questions later?
I need to ask the questions as I go, Mayor.
Well, this is not a question and answer session.
Well, it, it's a information for the public, sir.
Terapany, you know that.
All right, the other thing, okay. Could I just ask you, Ms., is your practice healthcare? I would submit to the commission that Mr. Dagenau and Mr. Le Corus are not qualified to negotiate this lease on behalf of the city for a hundred or two hundred million dollar facility. The things I'd, if I get short of breath, it's because I had some issues. Commissioner Banther, Commissioner Carr, you guys are pretty quick with numbers. The, uh, the lease that we're currently in right now, from, um, two thousand to two thousand forty, has a escalator of ten percent in year five. It has an escalator of two percent annually. If my math, if my, uh, math is correct, that's like a forty percent escalator over the term of the lease. Maybe a little, little higher. Is that correct? Come on, you guys, you guys are fast. You're young. Um, in any case, the, the lease started, the lease started at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year with a ten percent escalator in year five, which took it to two seventy-five. If my math is right, it, it, year twenty forty, the, the, that year, the lease would be bringing in four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In this proposed amendment, you're, you're capping it at two thousand and eighteen at three hundred thousand dollars per year. And as Mr. Vaticiotis pointed out, the extended term of the lease from twenty forty to twenty seventy is for three million dollars. So, that's a hundred thousand dollars a year versus three hundred thousand or four hundred and fifty thousand. So, you're, you're, you're given a, you're given a, a thirty-year extension to the lease for three million dollars, prepaid. Future commissions will not have those revenue streams. So, it, it even the three hundred thousand dollars a year for thirty years is nine million dollars. Why are you given a six million dollar discount down, down the road for? I mean, I, I, have you guys thought about this? Can you tell me why you're giving these huge discounts? I mean, four hundred, you've, you're given a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year discount over a period of twenty years or so, but, I just, I, I think that you should defer this. I think you should hire a, um, a law firm that specializes in healthcare law to guide you. Some of this language is so complex, and it's, it's, uh, striking out language and replacing language, but you don't have a red line and strikeout document that I've seen, and you don't have the leases next to each other to compare. I, I don't think you're doing the citizens of this community a, a service. In fact, you're doing them a disservice at, at the way this is being negotiated. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Come back.
I'm going to give my time, uh, to Mike Kuskudis. Again, Mike Kuskudis, six two three East Harpen Avenue. You know, don't forget the thirty-plus billion dollars.
Mr. Kuskudis, you already spoke.
I know, but Jason gave me his time. Mr. Dunkle gave you his time, yeah. You know, as, as part of that consideration, and I understand, Mr. Terapany, but you also have to factor in the value of those improvements that are being made to city-owned property, number one. I too have been involved in this hospital for a twenty-year-long, twenty-year period. So, and I've seen the improvements, and I've seen with the commitment that Florida Hospital has made. So, you can't discount all the prior improvements and also the future improvements of having that facility being top-notch or, or going to be, or going to have. The other question is, you know, you, you brought up with, with regard to negotiating a lease. You know, I'm, I'm a lawyer, and there's, uh, when I look at a lease, I don't look at it to the type of business. I'm, I, I, it's a real estate deal. It's a landlord-tenant situation. As a landlord, you make your best deal. As a tenant, you, you also try to make your best deal. That's all this is, is a real estate lease. Or the city's not in the business of running a hospital. The hospital's in the business of running a hospital. So, when you negotiate a lease, part of the issues of the old lease, quite frankly, were that the city was kind of dictating how hospitals should be run, and that's not the city's purview to dictate or in, involve itself in the management of hospital operations. That's one of the issues that was critical or issue in, in the older, older lease. What the lease that is being created or is proposed is a landlord-tenant situation. Let the hospital be the hospital. Let the landlord, let the city be the landlord. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Go back to the commission, Vice Mayor Panther.
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Terapany and Mr. Vaticiotis for coming forward. I do think their tenure with this issue in the past is to be respected. I'm glad that we took the time to, to answer those or to respond to that. As far as, um, the concerns about the lack of income to future commissions, that is a valid concern. Uh, how I approach that is, is, is the present value of money. We have a qualified tenant who has proven to be the, uh, to be a very good tenant, who is willing to pay upfront rent, and also to keep in mind that, per, per the last referendum, the, up to the current lease, the, um, the, the payments are frozen. So, negotiating from the end of the current lease to over, o- over to twenty seventy, we're gonna, we're getting rent paid in advance with no possibility of refund. If there was a possibility of refund, I would not support this. If, 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 if rent was not paid in advance, I would be much more strenuous as to what I, 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 I would require from, you know, you know, uh, tho- 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 from this lease. But as my degree, and, 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 uh, though, and though, and economics teaches me, the, the, uh, present value of money is worth more now than, than in the future. So, um, I personally am comfortable with collecting that, that rent upfront and, uh, per our investment policy. I know it's not a whole lot, but it's something, uh, getting a gain off that each year. Um, so that's, that's where my comfort level is as far as the income side goes. And then, and that, and that's a very valid question that Mr. Terapany raised. Also, we have a tenant that's willing to do tenant improvements to a city-owned property that are very, that are very significant. That as well plays into my judgment in this. So, you know, I think it's a win-win for the city. Uh, and, and, and as far as, you know, our, our counsel not being a healthcare attorney, I understand that. And I'm, I'm always, and I, I said from day one that I depend upon everyone in, 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 in this community for input and, and, and for advice. I don't think any one person on this board i- is a, is a, is a complete expert. And I have, you know, called upon many i- i- in, in, in this room before for help. You know, but it's a lot easier to have the engagement from the beginning than, than tonight, last minute. Doesn't it put us in a hard spot where, you know, do we, do, do, we, do, we, do we go with, um, public comment or with our staff? That, that's a hard place to be in, uh, at least for me. So, um, you know, I, 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 though I kind of wish we'd had some of this input in the very beginning and maybe gotten it worked out. Um, I believe, at least in my opinion, uh, especially to Mr. Vaticiotis's concerns, it has been worked out. Ultimately, we'll let the voters decide this, but in my opinion, I think what we've learned tonight uh, lends enough for my support. But I, I just want to stress my gratitude to Mr. Vaticiotis and, and, and Mr. Terapany for coming forward tonight with their concerns, acknowledge their tenure in this community with the hospital thing.
Thank you. I also like to, uh, thank Mr. Vaticios and, um, Mr. Terapany for their input and always valued their opinions and their recommendations. They've always been good advisors to me. I believe this lease agreement, uh, is going to help, it's going to give the opportunity to the hospital to do many improvements. If y'all remember last year, the hospital- If you all remember last year, the hospital had to be evacuated because it was not strong enough to be during the hurricane. So with that, we should be able to correct the problem, I think, as a safety issue as well. So, but, and of course, in the end, the final decision comes from the voters, the people of Tarpon Springs. And I believe that we should have not only a state-of-the-art hospital, but we also should have a safe hospital for the people and be safe during the hurricane. Thank, any other comments?
Yes, thank you for your comments. I agree with Vice Mayor and the mayor. And the point that Mr. Kuskudis made, this is a lease agreement, and I don't think that we need a specific attorney to negotiate this lease, as long as they have experience in lease agreements. This hospital is a huge asset to our community. I appreciate everything that they've done so far and the money that they've spent. And I think the three million dollars upfront is going to help both of us. And we need this hospital, we need the improvements. We can't keep putting that off. So I do agree with going with this tonight. Thank you.
Commission, I have additional comments?
Everything's pretty much been discussed that I would have talked about. I know one of the discussions that we have had with the future funds for future commissions is we looked at putting this three million dollars in an account that will grow over a certain period of time to actually reflect the three-hundred thousand dollars that we would be getting on an annual basis. So the funds would still be there for future commissions, although it's on an escalating amount, there's still the funds that would be available. And I would support that moving forward also, that that would be set aside, as discussed in the workshop, overall, that that would be there and growing for future commissions to use as needed, instead of maybe just on a big project here in the next year or so. So there's a lot of discussion, there's a lot of questions here. I do think our city attorney addressed a lot of the concerns that were brought up overall. And there's obviously a lot of passion here as a community. I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you. The chair will detain the motion.
Motion, motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number sixteen, which is the ordinance two thousand eighteen dash twenty, submitting a referendum for exclusive easement at ten-twenty-eight Gulf Road. This is a second reading. City Attorney, if you please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number twenty eighteen dash twenty, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, submitting to the electors of the City of Tarpon Springs, a sale of a perpetual exclusive easement over a portion of city-owned property located at one zero two-five Gulf Road and providing for an effective date hereof. Second reading of ordinance twenty eighteen dash twenty by title only, published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on July twenty-seven, twenty eighteen.
Are there any commission comments?
I just have a quick question. Now that this, if this is approved and goes on to the voters and passes, do we have any idea what tax revenue this would bring in at all? Has that been discussed? Because it goes from a city-owned property to potentially privately owned, so then it would be a taxable asset. Has that been discussed at all? Regardless, it's an added benefit, I just wanted to know if that was.
I think it's classified as a perpetual easement, I don't think that would change.
Okay, so it wouldn't be taxed then?
Because it's really a perpetual easement that they get.
Okay.
You know, getting a free title of property.
Okay, all right. Thanks for clarifying that.
Still stable there.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, I need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Enroll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yeah.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number seventeen, which is the resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixteen, calling for election in valid language. City Attorney, if you please read the resolution.
Resolution number twenty eighteen dash sixteen, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, calling for the municipal referendum election to be held in conjunction with the general election of Pinellas County to be held on November sixth, twenty eighteen. Establishment of the ballot, title and substance for two referendum questions, proposed extension of an amendments to lease with Tarpon Springs Hospital Foundation, and proposed sale of a perpetual exclusive easement over a portion of city-owned property at one zero two-five Gulf Road, providing for set elections, submitting said referendum questions to the voters, providing for notice to the supervisor of elections, and providing for the effective date hereof, resolution twenty eighteen dash sixteen by title only.
The resolution has been amended?
Yes, the resolution has been amended to include some language and formatting changes requested by the supervisor of elections.
Are there any commission comments, question?
I've just got a quick question. I know there's only a limited amount of space to put language in for these referendums. Is there any discussion about what the city plans to do with the funds of the three million dollars? Is that something that could be included or is that something that, is there not enough room or what's, I don't, I'm just curious?
Well, that question itself wouldn't need to go to referendum, so it's not included in the language.
Okay.
I think we talked about before, probably the appropriate thing to do is we're coming up in a year and a half to the charter, the appropriate thing, and to put that restriction to do what you want to do would be for an item for the charter committee and go to that for a charter designation, that that money will be kept in interest until two thousand forty to do. So we had said that time, probably the appropriate place for you to put that onto the thing would be in our charter, in our next charter thing, which is about a year and a half away we do every five years. So that would be the location where you'd ask to go to the voters, put that in your charter.
Okay, I just know from some of the public comment tonight on some of the discussions, it looks like the city would have a hundred thousand dollars, right, during that time period of year? So if we could educate, maybe.
What's been on the website and what's been at the meetings, and if people would have watched those, as you see, if you invest the three million dollars and don't spend it and collect three percent interest, you'd collect almost six million dollars, which would be the exact amount of three hundred thousand, not one hundred thousand. So, you know, you can do the math, if you only get two percent, what you get, but again, you invest that money, the intention and the chart that you were given was that money would be invested. And by the time the three-hundred thousand payments go up, you'd have the option of either a lump sum of about six million dollars to do something with, or depending, you know, what three-hundred thousand was in two thousand forty, you would have six million dollars. That commission would have the option of six million dollars to maybe, maybe at that time, two thousand forty, there'd be some major projects could get done for that, and you wouldn't worry about the three hundred. But you certainly would have the opportunity to pay for most of the years till two thousand seventy with the principal and interest that you have for money. And again, that's why it was talked in the charter, similar to the roads and sidewalk program, where you have the money in and we do the roads and sidewalks with just the interest and we don't touch the principal. So that would be the equivalent, what we probably, you know, you'd ask to go into the next charter vote, put in the charter to preserve that money. So you'd have that there for that commission. And again, that would be that commission in two thousand forty to decide, we have this here, we want to dole it out for the rent three-hundred thousand a month or use it for whatever the good of the community is in two thousand forty.
Sure, if there's an opportunity maybe to educate the public a little bit more, I know we had some meetings here, if it's through the water bills or some more education as the election comes up.
Yes, we go to the election, yes.
A good idea. I don't have any further questions, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, I will detain the motion and has been amended.
Second.
Enroll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes, thank you. Well, that concludes the regulation agenda. We'll go to staff comments.
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
Your attorney?
No comments.
City manager?
No, sir.
City clerk?
I just wanted to remind the board that next Wednesday on August fifteenth is our sixth, the beginning of our sixth Citizen Academy. We have a full class and we're almost full for the January class, so we look forward to that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Banther?
Thank you. I knew that was upcoming to the academy, but it knows that soon. I'm never sure if I should congratulate or just apologize to the clerk's office. I appreciate that. And no real discussion tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Commission Carr?
I don't have any further questions or comments, thank you.
Commission Seber?
Congratulations on filling up Citizens Academy, it's always a fun, fun class. Well, I've got one comment. We have Hippie Fest coming up Saturday from two to ten, and that's a huge event on the docks that has been very successful, so I'm hoping to see everybody out there.
Well, thank you. I've got a couple of comments to make. As you probably already know, the sign for the community garden has been installed, it's rave operation. Congratulations to everyone. This is a great honor for, in the memory of our friend Jessica Burke, and we think about her constantly. I also like to congratulate the eight local businesses for being named the best of two thousand eighteen, the Suncoast News Reader Choice Poll. And they are the KT's Cleaning, Dobie's Funeral Home, Silver King Brewing, Mrs. Suvlaki Restaurant, Elaz Restaurant, Rusty Bell's Restaurant, the Echo Brewing, and the KCQ Barbecue Restaurant. So congratulations to them for doing an excellent job representing the city. Well, that concludes the regulation meeting, and it's adjourned at eight-twenty-eight P.M. And we are now going to the budget work session. I now call to order the budget work session on the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, August seventh, two thousand eighteen, at eight-twenty-nine P.M. The purpose for tonight's meeting is for the Board of Commissions to study issues, gather and analyze information, and to clarify questions. No votes are conducted during the work session, no public comments will be allowed during the budget. However, will be allowed during the two public hearings that are scheduled for Wednesday, September fifth, two thousand eighteen, and Tuesday, September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, at six-thirty P.M. Item number one on the agenda is general fund budget, enterprise funds, CIP discussion. Mr. LaCorus, if you could give us an update.
We do a roll call, please.
A roll call.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Kikta is absent in excuse.
City manager would give us an update?
So on my part, this is going to be pretty short, I just wanted to prepare. What the purpose is tonight is to give you an update for when we had the last work session, some update items, plus I wanted to give you some items in advance. As you know, we always do the salary and the ranges and reorganizations. We usually do that at a separate meeting, you have to vote on it. So that's going to be coming up on the twenty-first, but I wanted to give you this, some of this information ahead of time, so you had plenty of time to look at it and prepare for that. And I'll go into that a little bit more, but real fast, Ron's going to give an update of the changes since we talked at the last work session to give you some introductory things of what we're looking at on the salaries.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Ron Herron, Finance Director. And like as the city manager said, we're just trying to update you from the workshop that was on July twenty-fifth of what's been going on with the budget.
Oh, that's my first, I'll do that one, let me do that one first, because that's one of the introductions is, as you know, we budgeted, we budgeted three-point-five for salaries, but as I told you, we're going to do it a little bit different. This is the, hopefully, close to last year, although we may have some adjustments. Again, we've had to go with the past three, four, or five budgets of getting those lower salary people up. You know, there's all this talk about, you know, a livable wage. We wanted the goal to this year to be able to say everybody was twelve dollars an hour, which we're going to achieve with what we're going to bring you. We've also wanted to cut the people within the city that are below fifteen dollars an hour, if you go by that figure. So as you see these range increases, again, I'll talk about this in more detail if needed when it comes, but I just wanted to prepare you to see how the layout is. And here's the layout of the raises for employees, fifteen, twenty an hour and below will get six percent, fifteen, twenty-one to sixteen dollars, five percent, sixteen oh one to seventeen seventy-four percent, seventeen seventy-one to twenty-two fifty, three-point-five, and all employees above twenty-two dollars and fifty-one cents and above, three percent. And believe it or not, as we were doing this and constructing it, Ron told me that this fell real close to the three-point-five that we said we budgeted. So this is in totality a three-point-five. Again, we're doing this to get those employees up. The chart that he shows you kind of shows us how many employees are involved in this raise, sixty-one percent, sixty-one employees, the six percent, fifteen, the five, twenty-four, the four, sixty-one, three-point-five, and seventy-three. So the predominant amount of employees are getting the three-five or the three percent raise, and that extra money from the three percent is what's getting our lower salaries up. One of the things we'll know when we're done with this, fifteen dollar an hour and less will only have after this goes through, thirty-one full-time and twenty-two part-time that are under fifteen dollars an hour, and that's about a fifty-four percent change than we had before. So that was our purpose, and that what we've been able to accomplish, and we have been able to accomplish it within the three-point-five that we had budgeted. The second, the second, second column, the second page that he has up here is some wage grade adjustments. This is just trying to get our grades organized. The difference of this grade thing is these grades don't automatically come with money. A lot of times, there's a rule, they come with money, but we're just trying to place people. And the reason we need to do this, because we're knocking out grade four and five and starting at grade six, so we can accomplish that twelve-dollar, a dollar an hour thing. So we'll talk about the nineteenth, these positions that are moving up, all these on this page are moving up. It's just the grade change, it's not money that goes to the grade, it's the grade change. Again, I'll talk a little bit about, more about that next month. Now go ahead and go, Ron, with the charts, and then I'll go back a little bit about another item.
Yeah, we had some items for capital that was unfunded and previously when we talked to you, but we now have funded the security cameras. We don't know the exact cost that we'd put to be determined on the security cameras. Signage, we've budgeted twenty-five thousand. TV station and room modification for the old finance file room that's going to turn into the, another room for access there. Microfilm reader, printer, scanner for city clerk, ten thousand. Additional beautification, forty thousand. Extra marketing, if marketing position is not added, thirty-five thousand. So there's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand there that we have, we have added into the budget. The funding is from multiple funds within the city for those items. And then down below, there's other budget changes. Our workers' compensation insurance, we had budgeted ten percent, it came in at seven percent. So we got a seventeen thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars savings on that. Property liability insurance, we budgeted ten percent, but it came in at ten-point-nine percent, so a little bit extra cost there, about five million, two-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars, five million, five thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-seven. So total reduction in budget of eleven thousand, nine-twenty-five. And those are the only changes we've had in the budget there.
And again, what I usually say every year about the budget, the budget can be changed at any time, just because we pass this budget, you know, October, November, January, whenever it comes up, if there's a project or something to come in and we got to adjust money. Again, we're just trying to set the course for the coming year, but the budget is always a moving item. All these changes you see here still leaves us with a balanced budget and not using the reserve. I will tell you that the news from the cities, if it goes, it looks like from the millage rates that, remember, we always talked about there's five cities above twenty thousand population that are full-service cities. And we started, we started when we started talking about this as third, we were right in the middle, two above us, two below. If the increases from the cities that we know on their millage increase, especially with Clearwater going up, we will be fifth, we will be the lowest millage rate of those five when this passes. And if the other cities proceed, we already went to four. Again, Clearwater is going to have to catch up, you know, they're always below us at five-one-nine. They're going to have to bite the bullet and their proposals to go up to five-nine-five. So again, we're hoping to come out of this process with a balanced budget, not use the reserves, getting most of the things we want, and we will be the lowest of the five over twenty thousand full-service cities in Pinellas County as far as millage rate, for those who say we have such a high millage rate. There it is, full-service city, and we will be, we will be at the lowest when this results. The other information you've got, and I've got Karen here, but obviously, this is an item we can, we're going to discuss a lot on the nineteenth when we talk about reorders. I wanted to give you the information on one reorganization. There's a few others that you'll see, but I wanted to pretty much note the reorganization of Cultural and Civic Services Department, because that's where we're adding a substantial marketing component that we think will achieve what that we think will achieve what wanted to be achieved in marketing and what your needs and what you've talked about marketing. Diane Wood will be here to explain these to you, but in essence, Karen, if you'd just come up real fast, I know she's got a memo before you look at. What I'm gonna encourage after this meeting is everybody get with Karen between now and the 21st for our meeting where we do these, everybody get with her to go in detail, talk about these things, so we can come in the meeting and decide what we're gonna do. Obviously, I said we have, you know, our belief is that we're gonna fully be able to do everything that the needs and wants for extra marketing with this plan here, and that with the $35,000 we're gonna use instead of putting the salary for a part-time or full-time person, we have an extra $35,000 to actually go out there and do the marketing that we need to do. So, just a real short synopsis, because again, I'm gonna encourage everybody here to meet with you between now and the 21st, and we're gonna talk about this and see which way we're gonna go. So just gotta explain what you did in your talks with Diane Woods of how this is gonna work in with what we've talked about, an added marketing component with the city.
Okay. What I put together for you is current efforts that we're doing right now from the discussion last week. I don't know that everybody was really knew the things that the city's already doing. So this first page are all of the current citywide things. It doesn't include anything with cultural services or, or any other unit, just what we do citywide, the brochures, the newspaper. It came up, the travel brochures came up. We've been doing those every year since 2001. They're in all the AAA centers, all of the five welcome centers. We produce 200,000 of those a year. So they're, they're all throughout the state. The St. Pete Clearwater, we've got our billboards up. We've had those up for the past several years. And then there's some promotional sponsorships that we do. And each year, we do some different types of those. And then the different tourism publications that we do. I know the Jolly Trolley came up earlier. I have a meeting, in fact, next week to talk with them about advertising on the trolley. It's something that we've done in the past, and, and, you know, we're looking to do as a partnership again this year. And then it also came up last year about business marketing. So I put some information in there about what I do in terms of working with businesses, with business attraction, retention, the trade shows and conferences, the things that, that we do to promote the city from a business standpoint, the local and regional meetings that we go and prospect meetings that I have regularly. And then the data and research, as you recall, we did the economic impact study on tourism, so we've got some information from there. Visit St. Pete Clearwater has a lot of information. Most of that is beaches. They do a monthly visitor profile. It does include a bit of Tarpon Springs in it, a percentage of visitors that are coming up to Tarpon from, from the beaches. So we do have that. And moving forward, we can do a lot more with the data that they have. And then the last page is, I had taken some notes from the meeting, and these were, these were in bold are the issues that came up, of things that we need to do more, do better of, or what can we do moving forward. So that's what I've outlined here from my recollection, what we can do. And then I've tried to address some of what we're doing already and what we can do together with cultural arts and the professionals that they have there. I did have a meeting with Diane, and they do have resources that they're already doing in terms of their performances that, that we can use, that we can communicate better. I think we're gonna, we're gonna sit down again and, and move forward. I listed some things that they can do for us. So I think working together with them, sitting down and deciding, what are we already doing that we can just piggyback off of information that they have? They have a wealth of data that just needs to be shared. And then working better with St. Pete Clearwater CVB and sitting down with them, and then again, attending those TDC meetings. So getting more involved countywide, which we haven't been doing, which is a good thing that we need to, to do. So these are, this is what I've put together after meeting with Diane, to let you know what we're currently doing, what we could do. And then moving forward, as we're working together with our other departments and what they're doing, we can have a more robust marketing effort.
And again, I encourage you between now and the, and the 21st, when we deal with this, to get with Karen and go over these further as we get to this. Again, in the reorganization, you can see, in essence, there's gonna end up, because one of the positions is the, is the position where changing the curator position to a marketing, there's gonna end up being three of them. Between Diane Wood, who's also experienced, there'll be two other positions that has a marketing component to it that we can use. So I encourage you to do that. And again, we'll answer any questions about anything we presented, any of this new information, and, and we'll answer any questions that you have.
Thank you for the update.
Yes.
Thank you. Billy Coors, I wanna congratulate you for bringing this forward to the salary increase ranges. And I'm glad that you are addressing the low wages, so you bring them up. So it'll be, some of the employees that we have, it'd be easy to have a better paycheck and be able to accomplish the things that they need to do. In favor of doing that, and this is what you did last year, and it worked out very well. Congratulations, and I'm supporting that. I'd like to see that more in detail. And this is the last minute, but I, I will study that a little further.
Yes, again, this'll be an item on the 21st.
And I'm looking forward to meet with Ms. Lemons and discussing all these things that she stated earlier. But again, I'd like to congratulate her for doing an excellent job for us. Thank you very much. Reorganization, you've been doing a good job doing that, and it worked very favorably in the past. And I'm sure that it's gonna be very good again this time around. I'm glad that you, we have a qualified person to, to be assigned for marketing. I like the fact that you assigned $35,000 for the person to be able to work with, because what good is it to have a position without allocating any funds for the person to be able to use it for marketing? So this is good, and I like that very much. There was one more item that Commissioner Kikta, which is not here tonight, that I'd like you to bring it up. She was concerned about the, the homeless leadership board for, she was entertaining the thought to take the funds away from the homeless leadership board. And I'd like to ask a little bit more, my fellow commissioners, I know Commissioner Seber served on that, I don't know who else served on that. Did you and Vice Mayor did? If you tell us exactly what they do, because I looked at the website and the functions that they do, it really doesn't tell me much. Okay. And Commissioner Seber?
As what is, what they're, what they're doing with their funding?
What is it that they're actually offering? What services are they providing?
Well, they obviously have a budget every year, and they receive money from the federal government and also from agencies that support them. And we're just one of those agencies or governmental agencies that, that support them.
I, uh,
We don't have anybody on that board right now, since I resigned.
Yeah. And, and not, I'm also in favor for taking the funds away from that from the homeless leadership board. But I, we gotta look at the Pinellas Safe Harbor. This is an agency that we use constantly. We're taking homeless people to them, and they open 24 hours a day. They will take anyone, including felons, drug and alcohol abusers. This is a service that are helping people to get back into, back into their feet. I think it's an excellent service. If we're gonna take this money away from, from the homeless leadership board, I think we oughta give it to the Pinellas Safe Harbor. They're providing a very good service for the, for the homeless, and I think it should be go directly to the people. That's my take on that. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I, I would agree with that pending our City Manager's investigation. That's the, as an appropriate use of public funds to give them that. I think more of that $5,000 to go towards physically helping the homeless towards going right now. I've said from the beginning, even though I have my disagreement with some of our community providers, I think foster men in South could learn from Tarpon and how we have our homeless outreach officer. We have so many community partners, so many generous churches. They could learn from us. I really don't think that we need to go learn from them, and that's about as nice as I can put it. So I'm in support of that. Don't I say my, my other comments too now about the budget?
No, 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 you go ahead.
Okay, I'm, I'm in support of the salary increases, the, the ranges. Thank you for working on that. I, I, I think I recall that all the way back when I was on the Budget Advisory Committee. I know that's not easy, and I'm, I'm proud, I'm proud of many things of the city. One of the things I'm most proud of is how we don't play games with our budget. I, I don't think I can think of one commissioner in, in my, in, in my mind that has, you know, toyed with that. In a lot of cities, I'm not saying it's, they think it's fun and games, but for different political reasons, they lower the millage rate when they probably shouldn't. Budgeting is, is not done in the most conservative manner. And Tarpon Springs, this commission and, and then previous ones, all the future ones, have really maintained a conservative budget, and that has brought us through the tough times. And, and I think it will be, be tough times to come. But thank you to our, to our, to our, to our City Manager, Ron Herring. What was the lady's name before Ron?
Ari Walker.
Yes, 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 Ari Walker. I will admit, she put me to sleep sometimes. She was probably a little too smart for me, but, um, her department and our City Manager, thank you very much for all you've done with the budget. I wanna make sure, as always, you've included yourself and the city clerks in the increases. Have you?
Yes.
I requested it last time.
Okay, yes, thank you. And I will get with Karen to get further educated on our marketing efforts.
Yeah, it'll be H on the, on the sheet I gave you.
Thank you very much.
And again, right now, I didn't have that. I should have had that on there. Right now, that $5,000 is open, because the homeless leader, we knew that was discussion up. So right now, it's a $5,000 open for what the commission decides to do with the $5,000. It's not, it's not dedicated until you decide what to do with that, that portion of the $5,000.
You'll send a notice after the vote.
Yes.
But you agree they should go to Pinellas Safe Harbor?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes, on that subject with the HOB board, that is a county board that, that gets funding and, and also helps Pinellas Safe Harbor. So they, they do provide help to a lot of agencies. But yeah, I agree. I think we could do something better with, with that $5,000, even if it went to our particular officer or our police department that's, that's helping with the homeless here. As far as the budget, yes, thank you, Mark. Great job. And Ron, approve of all the employee increases. Marketing, I just got this today. I do wanna talk to Karen some more about this, because some of the things listed here that we are doing and, and get reports on are either annual, like county counts. Tourism is our number one industry here. I think that we need to really look at our businesses and, and tourism. And I, I, I approve and agree that cultural services should have someone in marketing, but they talk about marketing event specialist. And, and we're not talking about just events as far as, you know, what I'm talking about. I'm, I'm really talking about more research, and $35,000 isn't gonna go far for that. Many research companies, marketing companies, like Dunedin used, spent over $100,000. So, you know, I just really am interested in, in talking more to Karen about this and seeing what we can do better. Getting reports from TDC is not like being there. I've been told by various commissioners, we need a presence. We need to be there to, to talk, to ask, and, and possibly get funds from them. So, but I'll talk to Karen more about this and,
That's why we wanted to bring it tonight, so there's two weeks before we just sprung it at the 19th, uh, 21st meeting, so.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark and Ron, thank you for bringing this back to us and showing us the additional items that are added to the unfunded or unallocated portion of the budget. I do support the mayor and his comment that he made about supporting the other organization in Pinellas County.
Pinellas Safe Harbor.
Yeah, I think that's a, a great idea overall, to continue to support the efforts for that. And we utilize that resource too. I think that's, if we're utilizing them, I think we should definitely be allocating some funds, if not, a little bit more maybe in future budgets. Let's see, I'm excited to see the signage added here as a line item, and additional beautification, and then some marketing dollars too, in addition to what we've already been doing as a city. One of the things I, I do have a question about was, I, I visit towns across the south, and a lot of these towns have, have done a lot from a planning perspective, economic development perspective. Is there funds available for, like, the city planner and economic developer to go visit and meet with other city municipalities? For instance, like Greenville, South Carolina, or Savannah, or some of these other Asheville, other towns locally in Florida to go and tour, not as like a vacation, we're paying a vacation for them, but to get educated, to see the steps of where they were and where they've gone, maybe how we could learn from these other cities. Is that something available to some of our staff members or?
Yes, that would be available, within the whole course of different things of the budget, even some of these items that, that would be available.
Okay, do we encourage that? As a, as a City Manager, do you encourage that? I'm just, I know this might be a lot of budget question, but I, I would think, I would like to encourage that this year and next year, and as long as I'm on the board, that we encourage at least the planner and economic developer, and I'm not sure you could decide who else would, to visit some of these towns to really see what they've done, because when I go there, I, I mean, I just, my mind runs wild of ideas that we could do here within the historical presence and the growth we're seeing in downtown and the accessibility and the amount of people that we have visiting the sponge docks is just such a great opportunity. But thanks for coming back with this and, and showing us, again, the, Ms. Lemons, all the marketing efforts that are going on in the town. I'm looking forward to reviewing this packet more over the next couple of weeks before our next meeting, and I hope to have a sit-down time with you as well. And thanks again, Mark, for bringing this stuff forward.
Thank you. Any other comment?
There's one comment too I forgot to mention, from a marketing perspective. OPL, it's a hotel chain down, it's Opal Sands, Sand Pearl. Christopher still has a lot of paintings in those hotels. There's a great article in that magazine. I'm not sure if anyone's seen that. There's a magazine that's in all their properties. I think, I don't know how many, it's like 50 to 125 properties. I can't remember how many they have across the state, up to the northeast. And it's like a two or three-page spread in the middle of their magazine. It, it focuses on like all their properties, but then there's a great piece about the city of Tarpon Springs and the sponging, the history about it. And I, I think Chris had an impact on getting that in there, and I think it's a great, it was a great resource. I'm not sure if Karen had something to do with it or not, but it's, it's a great article to see that Tarpon's being represented across all these. I mean, they're really nice hotels that they have, and so people see it nationwide.
Actually, they met at, at a restaurant here locally, at the Bistro, and I was fortunate to meet him and, and talk to him. And, and yes, Chris had a lot to do with it. So it's a great opportunity to talk about Tarpon Springs and expand our, what we're doing here. Good idea.
Commissioner Carr? Thank you. And you have mentioned something that is very, very important. You have mentioned that visiting other cities to get different ideas. I know that we have restrictions with the sunshine law for that. I think it would be great if we can do that, Austin Gores, the group, and I don't know what really, if we can do that as a commission. You know, just for a day, to different places.
Go to Greece for a day.
I'm not really sure what kind of restrictions we have, and what does it take to do that? Mr. Licorice, do you have any ideas about that?
You'd just be under almost similar, similar what you're under in, in Greece. So we can look at that, but we can, you know, it'd be, it'd be kinda similar. You can't discuss the items and stuff, but you certainly go look and listen to what the other cities are doing and that sort of thing, so. But we can, we can get you affirmed if, if you decide to do that. We'll get that firmed up to make sure that, uh,
Yeah.
There's nothing.
I think that'll be good.
I'm sure clerks will be ready to accompany you to make sure you stay along the lines of.
Any, any other comment? No, good, okay. Well, that concludes the budget work session. It's adjourned at 8:56 PM. Great meeting today, guys. Great meeting tonight, guys. Thanks.